I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just turned it on.
We'll do roll call of council. Councilmember Wozniak?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Wilms?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Fowler?
Here.
Flynn?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Wayne, do you want to get the sign in sheet?
Yes.
Okay, we come to citizen input. This is your opportunity to address the council. You have three minutes, and we have a very long agenda this evening, so we're going to hold you to the three minutes. The city clerk will actually advise you when the three minutes is up, and he's just getting the sign in sheet now. Yeah, it's on. Eleanor Gary Creekbaum.
I was going to take the full sweep. Is it on?
I believe it's on.
Okay, didn't sound like it's on.
Just speak into it.
Okay, that better?
Yes.
Okay, I had three minutes of comments prepared based on what I read in the Vista about the proposed burn ordinance, but it has come to my attention that burning leaves by residents will not be affected by this change. So that needs to be clarified because in the Vista and in what you have in the packet, it says that the new ordinance states that you have to get a permit. Well, I understand now that a permit is a phone call. It's not a written permit that we have to apply for to burn leaves. So if that changes, then I have a list of concerns about burning leaves and the problems that are by not burning leaves and the problems that that would cause citizens.
Fair enough. Thanks, Ellen. Lori Lawler?
I have some concerns about pit bulls. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My dog was attacked. He was run up to from behind by a pit bull and grabbed onto its neck and wouldn't let go. And since then, I heard from so many friends when I shared my story, a friend's six-year-old son had played with a family friend's pit bull all his life, then one day, without warning, no provocation, the dog attacked. It took three grown men at least nine minutes to get the dog off. The little boy has undergone multiple surgeries and still has more to go. Another friend's dog played by a school with a pit bull several times a week for two years or more. Then one day, the pit bull attacked it, no warning. The dog required multiple surgeries and was never the same. That's the argument is, no, they're sweet. We've all known pit bulls that are sweet, and until they just attack, they seem to snap. A former neighbor had an eight-week-old pit bull puppy. It played with my dog for a year. As it got older, it started to hold on too long and bite too hard. Then they moved away, and a year later, that dog got through a neighbor's fence and killed their dog, and it was court ordered to be put down. He was raised well. It wasn't how he was raised. A person was walking their pit bull down the street. He saw another dog inside a screen door of a house. He pulled his owner to the ground, dragged him on his face, and broke free, tore right through the screen door, and killed the family's dog in their own home. There's Dr. Michael Golinko of Little Rock, Arkansas, is a dog lover, and he's done one of the most comprehensive dog bite studies on record, including over 2,000 cases of the most severe attacks requiring surgery. Pit bulls were responsible for more than all the other breeds combined. He says a large number of these were by pit bulls who knew the victim, or the victims knew them. They had been gentle and affectionate family pets for years, sometimes before suddenly attacking. It's not how they're raised. It is estimated that about 33% of dogs in U.S. shelters could be pits or pit mixes at this time. So if you still think it's how they're raised, we don't know how they're raised because they came from a shelter. But they were bred for bear and bull baiting in England for hundreds of years before being outright banned in England, as well as 11 other countries. About 1,000 U.S. cities, all U.S. military bases, and even more cities and countries have ordinances against them, if not outright bans. They were bred for fighting, for strength, for killing. It's in their genetic makeup, just like herding is in a cattle dog's genes, hunting in a bloodhound, et cetera. I've seen pits and pit mixes five times since April in Bella Vista, off-leash, in the parks and on the trails. Their owners loved them. They considered them absolutely harmless. They were not being aggressive at the time, but who knows? I'm just saying, maybe muzzles, maybe order muzzles to them when they're out in public.
Okay, thanks, Lori. Jean?
My name is Jean Grossclose. I represent Cooper Communities. We have 10 parcels in front of you this evening for rezoning requests. I would, at the risk of being redundant, like to point out that planning staff, after review of our application, recommended approval of all 10. They were approved by planning to present to you for your final determination. So I would like to say that, from our perspective, we think it's the highest and best use of the property, and we ask for your consideration and your approval. If approved, there is some urgency regarding these parcels because we do have several under contract that, you know, the process has delayed closing for a period of time, and we understand that. But there is some urgency, so we would request that this reading be the final reading and that you waive second and third reading to allow us to move forward with those sales. And that's it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Jean. Lori Ledoux?
Hi, thanks for letting us talk. I'm here about the letter L, the rezoning request for parcel number 16-40211-000. And we live on that little cul-de-sac that is being affected if that area is rezoned. And I was here two weeks ago to speak to the planning commission, and they recommended that it be approved and recommended to y'all to pass it. But I come one more time to ask you to please listen to the concerns. The, there's a poster, so you could tell. The area where they're wanting to rezone to residential commercial is this big tree area off of Huntley Lane, Lancashire and Huntley. And the closest house is just right there, just 21 feet from where they want to put all these shops. It's where the children play. It's where the people walk their dogs. It's just one little cul-de-sac right here, and we don't know why it would be necessary to rezone that one area when there's so many, these pink dots are all the empty buildings that are already zoned for commercial. And we don't know why they can't fill up these first before they rezone the ones by our little street that would be forever changed and forever no longer able to be where we moved into. We didn't look for a house by a shopping center. We didn't look for a house by a daycare or a restaurant or a convenience store. We wanted this small, very quiet cul-de-sac. And also, if you're, you live here, so you're familiar with how sharp that curve is right there where the people would be trying to turn in to this shopping center. It's very curved. People would not be expecting to have to stop right there. It seems dangerous to me because people are not going around the curb expecting to have to stop to go into a shopping center. And if it's decided that that's too dangerous, if they go on Huntley, it's just going to be cars just constantly on that little street right here. And there's a bike trail head right up here that the city already spent, from what I understand, thousands of dollars to make it a nice, beautiful trailhead. And I don't think all the bikers that were trying to get in here want big shopping areas right where they're trying to bike. So those are the major concerns that I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Stephen Ledoux?
Thank you for letting me speak here. I am talking about the concern of the rezoning property near Huntley Lane. The first house is only 21 feet away, and if y'all rezone it, there will be an increase in traffic, crime, and noise. There's already constant traffic through Huntley, and there are multiple unused sites within a six-mile radius of this property that are already zoned. There's a high risk of hitting children because there are a lot of children in this area. Cooper Communities is not doing this to help the community. They're doing it just because they want to make more money. Cooper Communities is coming and getting what they want. They don't have to live here, but we do. Other properties close to that are already zoned for commercial use. Cooper Communities has been working with the Bella Vista Planning Commission for years and usually get what they want. All they have to do is ask, and they get it. Two weeks ago, I sat here and heard over 150 citizens plead to the planning commission not to approve the properties in question, and except for one, they approved every single one. Cooper Communities has already rezoned and developed multiple properties. Those properties were leased for a short time and are now vacant and deserted. They failed. If they are going to rezone other properties, they can pick a spot that is not 21 feet from a residential house. Right now, Bella Vista Town Square, town, sorry, Town Center is not being used, or half of it is not being used. Cooper Communities was really interested in the community. They would stop rezoning properties near residential houses and other lots. If they want to have more business suites, they can turn Bella Vista Town Center into a place that actually looks decent and not a ghost town. The committee does not have to live there, but the residents of Oak Knoll Lane have to if you approve the zoning change. The members of the planning commission would not want to live there if they rezoned it. If the residents of Oak Knoll Lane wanted to live near a shopping center, they would live in Bentonville, right next to the Walmart Amphitheater or Topgolf. A good number of minors live in the Oak Knoll Lane area. Rezoning the property will make it unsafe and dangerous for the children to play. The residents of Oak Knoll Lane live there so they can be near the outdoors and trees, not near a restaurant. The planning commission couldn't care less because they don't have to live near a restaurant, shopping center, daycare, hair salon, barber shop, or convenience store. We are asking you not to approve this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledoux. John Coats?
Good evening. I have a simple question, first of all. Is this the final reading on the amendment of Section 1038 tonight, or is there another vote?
Okay, there are two on here. Are you talking the first ordinance?
The residential burning.
Okay, well, the first one, I believe, is going to be tabled indefinitely because there's another one on the, on the docket this evening. If you go through it, just let me find out. It's number N is the one that'll be under consideration for first reading.
Okay, so the, this is not the end for that, and I can get a full reading of the proposed change by talking to the city hall?
Yeah, in fact, do we have copies of the proposed ordinance down there?
The residential burning.
Not here. No?
Okay, so.
If you, we can get it for you, for sure.
Thank you, that's all I needed.
Okay. All right, council, this is your opportunity to weigh in on the citizen's comment. Anybody want to start? Mr. Snow?
I'm just wondering how this, this proposed shopping center and restaurants and everything, you know, what information that the people have that this is all taking place or about to take place.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, John had it.
Okay, John?
I'd like to address the comments made by Lori Lawler about the pit bulls. I know this has come up before. People kind of brushed it off. I think she has a pretty good point. I've always, I always look at these things as a risk-reward kind of relationship, and just from observing over the years, it strikes me the risk-reward with pit bulls is out of whack. It's not so much that they once in a while are inadvertently vicious. They have a biting ability, a clamping-on ability that other dogs don't seem to have, and it has resulted in a lot of injuries and a number of deaths in the U.S. is the reason so many cities have banned them. And I think we should give this more consideration. I appreciate her bringing it up.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Holmes?
Relative to the rezoning request, especially petition number 2021, number 38, 580, and that's the one that's on Huntley and Lancashire. That was a vacant land when the people came in, as other parcels are tonight that we're considering. Those are all vacant parcels owned by a property owner. In this case, it happens to be Cooper Communities, but it could be a private owner. Private owners, if the land is not platted as a subdivision lot, do have the prerogative and the privilege of asking for the property to be rezoned to another usage, but that usage needs to be compatible with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that we've adopted, and it needs to be consistent with other appropriate uses in the neighborhood. I think at the planning commission meeting, some of those were identified. All of these 10 properties come with staff recommendation. They came to the recommendation for the, for the planning commission to rezone, and I'm sure that recommendation continues tonight. The uses appear to be consistent with one exception that was not mapped in the Comprehensive Plan correctly, but not inconsistent with the usage in the area, and that's up on Ardwood, is it Ardwood?
Ardwell.
Ardwell and Scottsdale and Glasgow Drive. There are two parcels on opposite sides of the street of Glasgow that are outlots, if you will, and reserved property by Cooper. They were incorrectly mapped in the Comprehensive Plan, so that showed them as being conservancy. And so it's reasonable and appropriate that the owners of land can come in. And based upon the merits of the rezoning, which is what our planning commission looks at, our staff looks at, and the planning commission then makes a recommendation to the council for action, that then allows the council to make a decision and firmly modify the zoning map, which is the action of the ordinance, so.
Okay, thank you, counselor. We do have a vicious dog ordinance on the books, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Yep, and we have prosecuted under that as well, if I remember correctly?
Many, many times.
Okay, thank you. And Mrs. Ledoux, you had mentioned that there was a trail head on Huntley. Just to be clear, that's actually not the city, and it's not the POA. That's private.
Private.
Okay? Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say two things on the burning ordinance. I, too, will be asking for some clarification on, does that include, you know, burning leaves or small things on your property? Because I'm not clear on that. I went back and looked at the current ordinance that we have, and basically, this is kind of a rewriting of that. And again, I had exactly the same question, so I'll be asking that. The pit bull ban request, I know that pit bulls can be controversial, for sure. I understand your concerns. You know, I read paper just like everyone else does. I know that there are instances out there that occur. I actually brought that subject up at the animal shelter, probably, well, whenever we change the dog licensing ordinance, I asked the question just kind of off the cuff. And I will tell you, as far as the people that work at the animal shelter that are concerned, they would not support a ban on pit bulls at all. They have a lot of them, and they, they like them. I think I mentioned this, my daughter actually has two pit bulls, Maisie and Stormy, and just with them two weeks ago in Carney, Nebraska. I'm not, I'm not a huge fan. I wouldn't personally have a pit bull, but these are two really sweet dogs. I hope that we don't have the same instance occur like what you're mentioning. And again, I know it's controversial, and as much as a lot of cities do ban them, I have also read where cities have reversed their bans. And there's a lot that comes up with determining what a pit bull is. You know, is it, is it a full-bred pit bull? Is it a 25% pit bull, 50%? Or how do you even determine what is a, what is a pit bull breed? So there's a lot of side conversation, you know, to have if we're going to go down that path. As far as the rezoning goes, Lori already touched on that, so I'll let that one go till we actually consider the parcels.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you. Next is approval of minutes. We have had two meetings. One on May 24th was a regular meeting. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I have a move.
Second.
Mr. Wozniak, seconded by?
Wilms.
Mr. Wilms?
Roll call, poll. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. We also had a special meeting of council on, on June the 15th. Minutes were published. Are there any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Wozniak?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fowler.
All right, roll call again. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. We have our financial reports for the four-month period ending April the 30th. For those of you sitting here, you may be wondering why we're talking about the end of April when it's the end of June. It's because there's a two-month lag in getting the sales tax figures in from the state, so we have to wait until it comes in. I'm pleased to report that our revenues are 1.4 million over the budget, and our expenses are 1.9 million under the budget. Cash on hand is almost $11 million, which is 54% of our unrestricted. And we, if you remember, have an ordinance that says we should be at 25, so we're in extremely good health financially. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wozniak, seconded by Mr. Fowler.
No, I didn't get that one. Larry did.
Oh, Larry did? Okay.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. Old business, we have an ordinance amending Section 1038 open burning of material other than structures of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to provide for minimum penalties for violation, for clarification regarding inspections prior to the issuance of a permit and for other purposes. This is the second reading. Mr. Snow, I believe, you want to speak to this?
Yes. This ordinance, I would move that it be tabled indefinitely as we have a, an amendment to present, that amendment to the current ordinance. This would have been an ordinance on its own, and I believe would have been 1039 had it have gone forward. But again, I move that it be tabled indefinitely.
Second.
Motion seconded by?
Burke.
Mr. Burke, thank you.
All right, excuse me. Roll call again. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Thank you. The second piece of old business is an ordinance adopting procedures for the imposition calculation, collection, expenditure, and administration of impact fees to be imposed on new development, providing a purpose and intent, providing definitions, providing general provisions and applicability, providing for the initial adoption of impact fees, providing for the establishment of impact fee accounts, providing for the appropriation of impact fee funds, providing for refunds, providing for appeals, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and for other purposes. This is the second reading. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wilms?
I would, I've been reading that long and lengthy ordinance and have a number of questions that have come up. I would suggest and ask Councilman Flynn if he would hold a special meeting to discuss that for any individual members of the council that would like to participate.
Mr. Flynn?
That would be all right by me.
Good.
All right by the administration.
Sure, that's fine. We just have to make sure we get notification to the press through the, the city clerk. Anybody else wish to speak to this? Mr. Flynn?
I was going to have the amendment to introduce today, I believe.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there an amendment, sir?
It's in the packet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it was offered, this, this dealt with the timing of when the fees are due. It amended the proposal in Section 5D.
Oh, yes.
So there'd need to be a motion to amend in a second, and then you all can debate that amendment if you need to.
Okay, it's to amend subsection D regarding collection of impact fees so that after the amendment, the subsection shall read as follows, and it's under collection, correct?
Yes, I was going to make a motion for that amendment. It was made because our city attorney indicated that the prior time for imposing the fees was not consistent with Arkansas law. So this is just cleaning up, make sure, yeah, it's with Arkansas law.
I have a motion from Mr. Flynn. Mr. Wilms, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, poll, please.
Okay, motion to amend. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie, 6-0.
Okay, so that amendment will be included in the third reading, which will be at the meeting in July. We'll move.
I assume the city will help us to figure out a time for the meeting, see when people are available or whatever.
Mr. Wilms?
Yeah.
You want it to be just a special work session, I assume? I mean, it wouldn't, not, not a, not a formal meeting.
No. Not a formal. It would be a work session.
So we can run it through, Mr. Jerks?
See what dates will work or whatever, yeah.
Sure, he'll take a poll and see. Okay, we'll move to new business. First is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to increase procurement authority without soliciting competitive bids from 20,000 to 35,000 to conform with state law changes, amending sections for purposes of conformance therewith and for other purposes. For those of you that aren't, aren't familiar with this, prior to this change of law in the most recent legislative session, anytime anything was going to be over 20,000, we had to go and get competitive bid. Well, prices have gone up quite a bit. This, this has been on the books for quite some time. So it slowed everything down because we had to go out and we had to advertise for X number of weeks, get the bids in, have a proper bid opening, et cetera, et cetera. This now gives us a little more flexibility. And counselor, I believe you said there was a COLA clause on this attached to it as well?
There, there was a, I'm sorry.
A COLA clause? Was there a cost of living?
Well, not in this proposal in front of you, it's not in there.
No, but in the.
The state law authorizes cities to permit purchases of less than $35,000 without competitive bidding. That $35,000 figure will go up based on a consumer price index figure. That $35,000 figure will go up based on a consumer price index figure, I believe it's after two years. So it, it will be a period of time, and so you all will be able to reevaluate that. You can be more restrictive on the city government if you choose to be. I'll just go out on a limb and say most cities are not. They usually just go, go with the full authority the state will allow you to exercise. I've been around doing this long enough, I remember when it was 10,000. But now it's gonna be 35,000. So what this does is changes existing code everywhere it says 20,000, it now says 35,000.
Okay, thank you.
That's what it does.
Mr. Snow?
Mayor, I believe under old business that we have skipped the introduction of the open burning ordinance?
No, that's later in the-
No, that's later on. That's number N.
Table the old one.
If it's further down the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Anybody else?
Are we still talking about this ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I asked during the work session, Jason, I think you clarified, so city council, previously, we would have to approve any expenditure over $20,000. So now that's gonna raise that to 35,000. I know that 20,000 will still have to be approved in the budget, but-
Any, any, everything's approved in the budget.
Right, no, exactly.
At least a dollar, but yes.
Right. But we don't have, that just means it's over 35,000, we have to formally approve now.
Right, so we, we, you know, there in the title, it increases the authority without soliciting competitive bids from 20,000 to 35,000, amending sections for purposes of conformance, so that also moves to the other sections in our code, which leads us to bring contracts to you that are more than 20,000, now that will be 35,000.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Everywhere in your mind, you dealt with 20,000, it's 35 now, in, in all ways, in these issues.
Are there any more questions or comments? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, this first reading of an ordinance.
Oh, excuse me, this is an ordinance, yes.
I, I make a motion, we suspend the rules, move to third and final.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, have a move by Mr. Fowler, and a second by Mr. Wilms? So you're voting on suspending the rules and moving to third and final?
Leaving three readings. Councilmember Snow?
Not leaving three readings, going to third and final.
That's right.
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. Amending the code of ordinances of the city of Bella Vista to increase procurement authority without soliciting competitive bids from 20,000 to 35,000 to conform with state law changes, amending sections for purposes of conformance therewith and for other purposes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wozniak?
All right. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. The next ordinance is amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38567, county parcel number 16-36435-000, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. And both Mr. Lynn and Ms. Robertson are here tonight to guide us through it. If you have any questions, I'll open the floor. Any, sir?
I don't have any questions. It's just because we went through these all at the work session and did a very nice job of going through the rationale, what was being requested, and how it was all done. I'd just like to say, so we have a lot of these tonight. So, and again, I know Larry, you know, kind of set, set the table for how the rezonings have to be considered, and also talk about as private property, et cetera. The private property owner has every right to ask for a rezone of, of a property. So I don't know, Larry, if you mentioned this, but as far as like our perspective is or how we are guided to consider rezoning, it has to do with increased traffic, congestion, noise, crime, trash, does it affect the land, I mean, the air, and different things like that. We can't consider who it is, what the parcel may eventually be, it has to meet the requirements of that particular zoning, whatever that is, there are permitted uses, and then there are conditional uses that would have to be approved. So as long as it fits within that, you know, then it, then it, then it's, it's okay. So I would just like to say, before we go through all these, I think I, I pulled up every single one on the GIS map, and I'm sure other council members did it as well. I fully looked at them, I looked at all the properties surrounding them, I drove by every single one, I drove the streets around them, so I did my due diligence, diligence, and I did my research. I didn't really find anything to be out of order, considering, you know, what was surrounding these parcels, so I don't know if there'll be a lot of discussion about, you know, each individual one, but in my perspective, I really believe that they can probably all be approved, you know, tonight, and let's get these things off our agenda so we can move forward with more pressing matters.
And I will add that Mr. Tappan and myself also visited every single property, stopped, looked at it, and looked around, and then looked at the other areas and also the uses, and we didn't find anything out of order. Mr. Snow?
In, in researching the, this rezoning petition, application, I found a document, I don't know if it's been overlooked or not, but it is a, is in the petition as exhibit A. And the applicant is stating several things that I really have a question to our city attorney, do this, the things that are stated in this, in this exhibit, from a legal standpoint, does it have any merit? And if you were to read all of the things that the applicant is stating, that we really didn't have the authority to zone these properties as P1. So if we didn't have the authority to zone them as P1, then do we have the authority to rezon them?
I'm happy to answer that, Ms. Snow. The exhibit, and I believe it's on each, each one of these, attached to the petitions for the rezoning on tonight's agenda represent an effort by the applicant to reserve certain legal rights and/or claims they may assert with regard to the city zoning process, the legality of its zoning ordinance and zoning classifications, or the legality of the procedure of the zoning ordinance's adoption, as they may relate to the applicant's property rights. By considering these applications or by approving them, it's important to note that the city is not admitting these allegations. In fact, the city strenuously denies each and every assertion made in these exhibits, just to be clear. The applicant's filing of these exhibits in no way restricts the council's authority to review and make necessary legislative decisions with regard to the rezoning of the properties at issue. It is important that the fact the applicant is making these assertions not play a part in your consideration of these petitions. The petition should be considered as any other petitions are considered, based on the same standards and in full accordance with the city's statutory and constitutional authority. So, yes, there are some, some very strongly worded assertions in there about what the city's allowed to do to them, and, and assertions of what we may have done to injure them. We deny each and every one of those things. We're not acquiescing to any of that by considering these, these petitions or even approving them tonight. So, really, they're just trying to reserve their rights in case they want to further challenge in litigation, and to not have, I would assume, I can't speak for them, not have acquiesced on any of those issues. So I think you just need to proceed with normal consideration and let those things play out.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Mayor Christie?
Yes, sir.
If I could. I did have the opportunity to sit in on the planning commission meeting. I think we went all of four hours that day, and heard of a lot of opposition, typically from residents who are living adjacent to one of these properties. I respect their wishes and their desires in this as well. I do think for expediency tonight and for expediency of the city council, whether the city council approves or denies these applications, I think in, in the interest of expediency, we should suspend the rules and move to third and final reading on each of these rezones.
Okay. Anybody else?
Can we do that for all 10 at once, or do we have to do it one at a time?
I think, I think it's, when you're suspending the, if you're, if you're asking me, when you're suspending the rules, you're not bound by the rules, if that makes sense. So as long as two-thirds of the council is agreeing to suspend the rules, you have very, very, very wide latitude in how you wish to act. I, I would just, with respect, I don't, I don't want to speak for the ultimate, I mean, I think in order to accomplish what we want to do, my, my suggestion would be a motion to suspend the rules, that items D on the agenda through M be considered on third and final reading for purposes of, of adoption, and-
Then I would read each one?
And then, and when you read each one as they come up, that would be the third and final reading.
Okay.
And that would be a motion to suspend the rules. So, two-thirds of you agree to that, I think you could do that.
Okay, and then, after I've read it, then we vote on each one?
Well, you'd have more, you could have more debate and then a vote, like you normally would. You'd go through the agenda, but you would, you would not have to do this suspension on each individual. You will have to have an individual vote on each ordinance, so there's no way to avoid that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. In, in that case, I do want to move to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading on items D through M on our agenda tonight.
Do we have a motion from Mr. Burke, a second from Mr. Wilms?
All right. Roll call vote on that. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie.
Okay, we'll start with D. This is the third and final reading. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38567, county parcel number 16-36435-001, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. Is there any discussion? Mr. Flynn?
The end of that number was dash 000.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm only gonna say, I know that there's like some consternation that's taken place between the developer, the city, recognize that, but it's mine, it's our, my, my responsibility to make a decision as each one of these properties stand on its own. So decisions made tonight, regardless of who it may be, it wouldn't matter, the same process, the same thought process, the same procedures are all in play. So if it was somebody else, it wouldn't matter. It's just, it, it, it's my job to look at each property standalone regardless of who may be requesting a rezon, and that's my position, and that's what I'm gonna do.
Thank you, okay. No other discussion, entertain a motion to approve.
I'd, I'd like to say one more thing before we do that. I do think in, in these cases where land was originally zoned as P1 Conservation, I think about the fact that we became a city in 2007, and for any one of us who might have owned property in Bella Vista prior to that time, who might have acquired that property with any of, of many interests in mind for the use of it in the future, to have found out either at that time or discovered at some later date that the city zoning in, in the efforts to become a city, this, there had to be some things that happened in a condensed period of time, and some of these lands were zoned P1 Conservation, which is not common to, to zone a, a private landowner's property that way unless that property owner really wanted it to be zoned that way. And so I think of, of myself or, or any of the residents of Bella Vista, that if they owned land at that time, and then for some reason, through the process of becoming a city, that, that they discovered that that land had been zoned as Conservation, I'm not sure how I'd feel about it if it was my land. I, I, I love parks, and I, I, I think one of the things we're blessed with in Bella Vista, most of us, most of the residents of Bella Vista are property owners, and we have this shared common property as, as a member of the Property Owners Association, and that provides a really, a really rich opportunity for our, our kids, our big kids, our adults, anybody who wants to take a walk in the woods has that opportunity. We have green space available to us. And so I, I factor all of that into this, and I think these that are moving from P1 Conservation to some other use are the ones I'm particularly sensitive to as far as the application to have those changed. So that's kind of where I'm at on that.
Thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in? Mr. Wilms?
Going back to, we've lived here since before the city incorporated, it was a voice vote on the part of the residents in the city at the time. The development of the zoning code was an important first step as a part of the city's growth and organization. A part of that was to establish zoning districts and define them. Another part of that was to take all of the land within the corporate boundaries at the time and assign an appropriate zoning district based upon the code that they were proposing to develop. I've been involved personally in mass rezonings in, in large land areas, 34 and a half square miles, in fact, of one city, where we had to realign parcels that had been created with the zoning code. And so it was properly done, the notifications were properly done. Not always do the property owners pay particular attention to, to the considerations that are given in the re, the assignment of a zoning district. And in most cases, it really was not harmful to the property or the property owner at the time, because they do have the prerogative of requesting an appropriate use at a time when development might occur, and that's what's happened here, so.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Fowler, Mr. Wozniak?
Roll call vote. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carrie, six zero.
Thank you. Moving on to E, third and final. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38570, county parcel number 16-71780-000, from P1 Conference, excuse me, P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Discussion? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Flynn and Mr. Wozniak?
Councilmember Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Thank you. Moving on to number F, third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38572, county parcel number 16-05370-000, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. Discussion? Entertain a motion to approve?
So.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
Just one comment. This parcel is, is on Everton Road, and it's about 5.39 acres that are being requested to rezone, so. And that's to residential from P1.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in? Okay, now entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Flynn, Mr. Wozniak?
Okay, excuse me. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
And Wills?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Thank you. Moving on to G, third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38575, county parcel number 16-04803-000, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. Discussion? Mr. Wills?
This is on West Highlands Boulevard, just west of Hiwasi Road intersection on the south side of the street. It's about 6.31 acres, requested zoning is R1.
Okay. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Okay, Mr. Wills, did you mention? Mr. Wills and Mr. Wozniak?
Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Thank you. Moving on to H, third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38576, county parcel number 16-70288-000, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. Discussion or comments? Mr. Wills?
This is a, an area being rezoned that was replatted in July of 2020 by the Planning Commission approval and recommendation and the, and the, I don't know if we approved that or not, did we? I thought it came to our, I thought it came to the council.
A replat?
Uh, yeah, it was a redistribution and some things, or some funnies about it.
No, it's too long ago.
Anyway, it's about 31.4 acres along southwest Everton Road at the intersection with Highlands Boulevard, so it's kind of that southwest corner in there, so.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wozniak?
Okay. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item I, third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38577, county parcel number 16-19012-000, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. Comments or discussion? Mr. Wills?
There are two parcels here. One is on the north side of Glasgow Drive at Ardwell, about 10.1 acres, and there's a small parcel on the south side of Glasgow Drive at Ardwell Intersection. Both of those are requested in the rezoning petition. And that's to R1.
Ms. Robertson, you look puzzled. No? Okay. Is there any more discussion or comment? Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Fowler and Mr. Wozniak?
All right. Councilmember Wills?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to J, third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38578, county parcel number 16-23479-000, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. Comments? Mr. Wills?
The property's on Gordon Hollow Road, north of Scottsdale in the northeast quadrant. It's about almost 40 acres total parcel, but they're requesting rezoning of only about 23 acres. Of interest here in our comprehensive plan, it recommends that the city locate a trailside stop development in this immediate area in the future. That's a part of our master plan that doesn't necessarily have anything to do with rezoning, but it is something to keep in mind at the time the development might occur, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Wills and Mr. Wozniak?
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Thank you. Moving on to K, third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38579, county parcel number 16-25085-000, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Fowler? Yes?
Yes.
Yes? And Mr. Wozniak?
All right. Councilmember Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Moving on to number L, third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38580, county parcel number 16-40211-000, from R1 Single Family Residential to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. Any discussion or comments? Mr. Wills?
This is about an eight and a quarter acre parcel, as a couple of our residents tonight spoke about. It's on a, on a what, a major highway? Is that?
It's a state highway.
Major arterial, and what's the other one, a minor city street, Huntley?
Huntley, yes.
It's a residential road.
Residential street. The interesting part, this is being requested to rezone to C1. As with all the properties we are addressing tonight, any plan for development will come back to the Planning Commission for review and approval. Depending upon the nature of that development, it may come to the City Council if there's a subdivision of land proposed. Some of the larger residential tracts, that may be the case. But certainly in a C1 district, that will always come back to the Planning Commission for review and approval, so you will have another opportunity to review and comment on any development proposals for that site.
That is true. Anybody else? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Mr. Wills and Mr. Wozniak?
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
Moving on to the last one, which is number M, third and final. Amending the Belavista zoning ordinance and map to rezone property described in rezoning petition number 2021-38581, county parcel number 16-22588-000, from P1 Conservation District to R1 Single Family Residential. Discussion or comments?
Move to be approved.
Second?
Second?
That was Mr. Snow and Mr.?
Larry.
Larry, Mr. Wills?
All right. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wills?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Carey, six zero.
The last ordinance of the evening, and we're now away from third and final.
This is first reading.
Okay, we're in? I'm sorry?
First reading.
Yes, we're in the first reading. Is amending section 1038 open burning of material other than structures of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Belavista to provide for minimum penalties for violation for clarification regarding inspections prior to the issuance of a permit and for other purposes. That's the first reading. Discussion?
Mayor, this, this ordinance is a, an amendment to the current, current ordinance. As previously as I moved that the original ordinance, which was rather long and involved, moved that it be tabled indefinitely. The Chief Sims, Alton Wozniak, Mr. Wills, and myself, we all met and hashed out the, the language of this ordinance. It does not involve leaves. It clearly states that this is for open burning and clearing of lots and, and the open burning of lot cleared materials. So, I would move that it be approved, and I would also move that, that be moved to the third and final reading since it is a public safety matter.
Mr.?
Mayor, the motion to approve would not be in order.
Right.
His motion to suspend the rules and go to third and final reading would be in order.
Yes.
If it's seconded.
Okay, I have a second from Mr. Wills. So moved by Mr. Snow and seconded?
To suspend the rules and go to?
To suspend the rules and go to third and final. And that's what you're about to vote on.
Can we discuss that?
Can we, can we?
We can certainly discuss it.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not so sure that's such a good idea. I know there's been a lot of struggles with this, with the language and whatnot, but I, I think it still needs a little study. One, one section, I'm, I direct this at our attorney, I'm particularly concerned about, I assume if you violate this ordinance, then you're subject to some kind of fine or, or penalty. And the section about when you're burning and the smoke, I don't have it in front of me, and the smoke goes on, you know, bothers other people, I, I know that's hard to deal with that issue, but that is unduly vague. If somebody chose to, uh...
That provision is in the?
Resist that.
Is in the current?
Yeah.
Current code.
I, I don't know that would work.
Yeah. The section you're talking about, it says, "No open burning regulated by this section shall be conducted in such a manner as to cause unreasonable encroachment of smoke or heat onto neighboring properties." That's in our existing code, so it's in this now, but I think your point is well taken.
Yeah, I get what you're, we're going for, but it's, it's pretty vague.
We don't want that, because vague ordinances aren't valid ordinances, so.
Anybody else?
I, I, let me, let me just say one more thing. If that's all there was, if we had an accusation, it's just being unreasonable, I would not suggest that a citation be written in that circumstance just for that very reason. I think it's too subjective. Now, if you're violating the spacing requirements, you don't have the fire suppression water or the equipment out there, those are very objective things you can look at, so.
Yeah.
That helps.
Mr. Snow?
Mayor, the original draft of this particular ordinance was rather lengthy. Everything pertaining to any definition was thoroughly explained, I mean, pretty much to the detail. So, that's why we went back to the drawing board, so to speak, with Chief Sims, and primarily the, this ordinance met with his, excuse me, met with his approval in every respect, but that was primarily the reason we went back to the drawing board to redraw this, to re, redo it, was because of the length of the original ordinance and all of the definitions, and that thoroughly explained everything, again, to the detail.
Anybody else wish to comment? Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. I just, I wanted to say, I appreciate Councilmember Snow and, and the others who have really tried to cipher through this and, and get it, get it right. I know a lot of effort has been put into that. I do think it's, it's the first time, I think, that we've pondered the, the amendment in detail, and I'm inclined to support it, but I, I feel like it would be a good idea for this to bake a little bit more, so, wouldn't be in support of moving to third and final.
Mr. Fowler?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see where this has a, has a separation between burning of leaves or small branches or whatever and the clearing of lots. I mean, fills me, I mean, this is, this is the ordinance that was basically, it was already written and already in play, and it, it's, it says, "Amending section 1038, open burning of material other than structures," and that's all it says. Doesn't separate out those two things. And quite honestly, I actually like the last ordinance that was written trying to manage burning for the clearing of lots. I thought it was actually pretty well done. But, so, and, and too, before, you had, you know, you could call 30 minutes before you wanted to burn leaves or whatever on your yard or whatever that was, and now the way I read this is you, you were going to have to request a permit. I mean, it's clearly written in here, unless, unless Chief Sims, unless you have the authority to make a, a delianation yourself, I, I don't read it in this ordinance.
Can I, can I address that?
And then, and then, lastly, I apologize, but then there's a mandatory, like, fine at the end if you're cited. So who's going to do the citation? Is that the Fire Department? Is that the Police Department? I, I don't know.
Mr. Kelly?
Oh, well, I was just going to say, the, the, the language about a permit, and, and this is, this came to light later in the discussion, but the current Fire Code talks in terms, the state Fire Code talks in terms of permit. Now, that, that doesn't necessarily, I, I think you can meet the permit requirement by calling and getting the okay of, of the Fire Department. I don't, I'm not sure it has to be an engraved certificate that you, you know, that has to be that sort of a formalized process, but...
Well, that's permission, then.
Well, it, it's, the existing Fire Code did talk about it in terms of permit. Now, our existing ordinance, the one that's on our books right now about open burning, does not talk about in terms of permit. It just talks about contacting the Fire Department.
Right.
So, of course, when you, when, as a lawyer, you, you have to read all these things to give them all meaning. So, technically, I guess, per Fire Code, it would be deemed a permit, even though by our existing local city ordinance, we don't talk about terms of permit, so I would say that. I, I want to make sure it is clear that this does, as you suggested, talk about any open burning of anything other than a structure. So theoretically, it would be leaves and trimmings and, and things of that nature would fall under the regulations of this, as our current ordinance does. Right now, you're supposed to call the Fire Department before you burn leaves. I don't know how many people know that or do it, but you do. So, that, that is a part of it, very much so. The penalty is new, and that, of course, there is a criminal penalty for violating the existing ordinance. It's up to $1,000 for any violation. Law enforcement or code enforcement would be the deciding authority for any violation of law, would not be the Fire Department. They would, if they saw something they deemed to be a violation, they would need to contact the appropriate enforcement to come out, and then if it became to citations, they would, the, the enforcement agency, the Police Department or the code enforcement officer, would be the ones to issue a citation. What this penalty provision does is requires a minimum mandatory penalty upon conviction of $500 for a first offense and not less than $1,000 for a second or subsequent offense. But that, you have to be convicted in court before that kicks in, so you, obviously you've got due process rights before that, so that provides a little guidance to you.
I think Chief Sims was wanting to...
On a point of interest, sir?
Counsel, thank you. If you look at the proposed ordinance right now, the section 1038?
Chief, can you speak into the mic?
The 1038?
Mm-hmm.
If you look at the current ordinance, it's on, it's being looked at right now, it refers to the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, section 307. I know it says 370 there, but it's actually 307.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Seriously, this guy.
30, 307, section 307 is already adopted by the council, okay? It's already on the books as an adopted ordinance by the council. We enforce the volume one of Arkansas Fire Prevention Code. In section 307, open burning, recreational fires, and portable outdoor fireplaces, okay? In 307.2, permit required. When it's talking about a permit required, there's three things that require a permit when you're doing open burning. One of those is clearing large acreage of land, you know, for forest control, like the forest does prescribe burns, it's like the Fire Department occasionally does prescribe burns. occasionally does prescribe burns. If you're doing it for prevention of the disease or pest control, of some sort of pest control, and a bonfire. So we consider a large lot clear a bonfire, which we utilize Section 307.4.1 under that same code, Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, Volume 1, as, and it lists bonfires about how, how close they need, how, how close they can be to a structure for their burn. We look at that as a permit required for a large lot burn, not necessarily for somebody burning leaves. Of course, we don't do it for people burning their grill, outdoor fireplaces, you know, pits and so forth like that. So that's, if you look at Section 307, which is already on the city books, already in ordinance, adopted by the council, then that's why that didn't get into the ordinance in the first place from the get-go? Good question.
Maybe we could just spell it out in the ordinance, so, because if anybody reads that, I mean, they, trying to find that, Section 307.1, and go have to go look at it to clarify.
Okay, here's the thing. Whenever.
I was just going to say that there are all kinds of books, laws on the books that people would have to go find. I, I mean, I would, I think you just, I think there's, other than we need to make sure it says 307 throughout, rather than 370. But we'll fix that. A cross-reference like that is legally sufficient. I think if, I don't know how much more cross-reference you're wanting to talk about.
Well, I'm just talking about a regular, you know, normal, everyday resident that comes and reads this thing, and then they're supposed to peel another layer. And I get it, Jason, I mean, I've done this long enough now to know.
Well, it needs to be user-friendly, I understand that.
Yeah, and I don't know that this is.
It, it may be, and I'll let Steve talk to this, but if people are concerned about the burning, maybe it's not a bad idea, they call the Fire Department to find out what they need to do, so the Fire Department knows about it. But that's, that, that's kind of policy things for him.
Well, when they, when they notify dispatch to burn, then dispatch goes that, through that with them, about what they can and can't burn, if there's a burn, they're checking for a burn band status and so forth. And I'm just going to say, out of, out of 5,400 controlled burns in 2020, we had, I think, 70-something complaints. So that's a lot of controlled burns, and yes, people are calling to get permission to burn. And they are finding out there's a burn ban and so forth. But I just wanted, you know, Section 307 covers a lot that's, that's currently in our ordinance right now. It covers a lot of that, but it's, it spells it out. Spells out attendance. It spells out portable outdoor fireplaces. It spells out recreational fires, bonfires, which we consider a large lot, lot clear a bonfire. That's why it requires a permit. Location, where can you burn, where can you not burn, who authorizes it? What do we do when somebody's burning illegally, other than citations? If nobody's on site, we put it out. We always have. That's just our, that's our policy and what we've been doing for years and years and years. It, I mean, it's laid out right there, and our intentions are, is whenever they get a permit, when the builder comes in, get a permit, whenever they're going to start burning, they'll be laid out what they need to do, the permit they need to fill out, the permit they need to put, place on the site that says they got a burning, burning permit, and they'll get a copy of Section 307. And the current, whatever y'all pass for the burn ordinance, they'll get a copy of that as well. That way that they know, by looking at these documents here, what they need to do when they decide to burn, or do a large lot clear.
I was, thank you, thank you, Chief Sims. And, and to Mr. Fowler's point, I think, you know, we're learning a lot tonight about, not 370, but 307. And it would probably be appropriate for the City Council to review all facets of that before we end up in, in final approval on this. So I, I think we're on the right path. I, I understand a lot of work has gone into this, and I appreciate that, but I don't think we're ready tonight to, to jump on that.
Yeah, I, I support the intent of what we're trying to do, I really do. I mean, I get it, you know, these large, or, or lot clearing burns, that's a whole different animal. And there are a lot of them taking place. I mean, I was going around looking at these properties today, I was, I mean, I know how many houses are being built, but I'm just astounded, every corner I turn around, there's another house, there's another lot cleared, there's another pile that's either has been burned, in the burning process, or getting ready to be burned. So I, I, I support the intent. I just think there's still, just some way to write a little clarification in there for just the resident, everyday resident that might want to go look at this and see what they can do and what they can't.
Okay, Mr. Wilms?
I, I think the enlightenment was when the three of us councilmen met with Chief Sims and talked about the reality of the adopted, was it Volume 1 of the Arkansas Fire Code, Fire Prevention Code? I think this is Volume 1. And that Section 370 is already adopted by reference in that code. What this does, it brings it to the fore in terms of making it more evident and communicating it to the public without having to go and research what Volume 1 of the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code covers. Because literally, lot burning, lot clearing, all of that is covered by Section 307 in one part or another, as is the, the lesser burning, the fireplaces, the fire pits, burning some leaves, that's already covered in that Section 307 as well. But this brings it to the fore in terms of notifying the public and communicating, communicating the need to notify the Fire Department, calling it to everyone's attention. You've got to call the Fire Department if you're going to do a burn on the outside, like leaves, brush, or particularly a more formal permit, I think is being considered for the lot clearing burns.
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Snow?
Something that this amendment provides for that is not in our current ordinance, and that is that there has to be heavy equipment or a water source available to, to deal with the fire, to be able to control the fire. Plus, someone has to be with the fire. If they, if they, if there's flames or embers, someone has got to be there with it, if that means all night or whatever that might be. But I asked for that it be moved to, excuse me, to final reading because of, we're in, going into what could be the, the burning period, excuse me, the burning period in, or at least a high burning period, time of year, if that is, if it ever quits raining, but.
And it just didn't, it was for a week.
Yeah, so, you know, that'd be the case, may not, may not be an issue, but that was my reason for asking that it be fast-tracked to the final reading.
Okay, I have a motion to move to third and final. It's been seconded. Gentlemen, do you want to keep that motion on the table or pull it?
I would ask that we vote on it.
Okay. Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Yes.
Do a roll call vote on the waiving the rules. Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Flynn.
No.
Wasniak.
No.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
No.
Burke.
No.
Okay, it fails four to two.
Okay, so it's still on first reading, and you may want to meet and have a little more clarification with Mr. Kelly? Okay, we'll move into the world of resolutions. We have two this evening to consider. The first is amending the 2021 city budget to recognize $24,505 in revenue from an American Rescue Plan grant through the Arkansas State Library, and to appropriate said funds for use by the Bella Vista Public Library. This is over and above the American Rescue Plan dollars that we are anticipating in getting sometime this year, in my lifetime, from the, from the feds through the state. And it'll be in, in two allotments, there'll be 50% this year, 50% next year. There are other grants being given out through the ARP to other organizations such as the libraries, to HUD, and to a whole bunch of other ones. I finally got a listing of them from the, the Municipal League yesterday, or, excuse me, Friday. And so that is where this has come from. And I believe I sent out to you a spending plan from Director Adams, but I'll just, I'll just go over very quickly. One is $7,255.24 to facilitate outdoor programming. It's, it's a portable outdoor screen with a high-resolution projector and all the, all the trappings that go with it, including benches and cushions for the kids. This is being pushed by those in, in DC that are wanting to spend the money to prevent the spread of COVID. They believe that outdoor activity is much better than being indoors. And so that's the reason that Suzanne has, has asked for this. The larger amount is $12,481, and that's more self-service options for patrons. Again, it's all related to COVID, so that it's a one-screen kiosk, it's a one-stop shop for computer reservations, self-checkout of library materials, and it goes on and on. It's got a coin bill receptor. Again, it's keeping people distant and removed. And, and the final is $4,767 for, for more books, CDs, and DVDs for patron use in, in all areas, and we think we can probably get that through the feds as well. So that's the breakout of the $24,000. I hope you all got it in the mail.
Yes.
And that's the rationale behind it. It's the same thing with whatever we're going to get. It's fundamentally COVID, and anything that might help people, for example, in broadband, because we have about five holes in the city, being able to work at home, and the kids will work at home in case they have another, I guess, outbreak. So having said all that, are there any questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Wilms and Mr. Flynn.
All right, roll call vote. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Kerry, six zero.
Thank you. The last piece of business, excuse me, this evening is a resolution awarding bid and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with First Star Exteriors in an amount not to exceed $102,474 for roof replacement at the city hall fire station number one building. This is a really old roof. It's a shingle roof that goes over the, the fire station, and you have part of the membrane as well, I think. And then there was a membrane that the POA put on years ago. We've had a lot of problems with it over the last six years. We've had contractors come in with caulking, and some guy had some sort of whiz-bang product that he said, "Don't worry, it'll take care of it," which, of course, it didn't. So we had a downpour today, and we got the buckets out once more. This is actually replacing the whole membrane and replacing the shingles. And so we're going to get it done properly. And as I mentioned, the bid was 102 and change, and we've already contacted the, the Municipal League with whom we have the insurance, and they're going to cover $64,000 and change. So we'll be out of pocket about 40 grand, and we have more than enough money in our cash reserves to do it. So for the sake of all of us that have umbrellas and see our lights fill up with water, I'm asking, please, pass this.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
This was competitively bid, was it not?
Yes, it was, yep. All wet, too.
Yes.
Motion was made, Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
And the second was?
Wasniak.
Mr. Wasniak.
All right, Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Kerry, six zero.
Meetings and announcements. The next City Council work session will be Monday, July 19th at 5:30 in the City Hall Conference Room. The next regular meeting of the City Council will be Monday, July 26th at 6:30 here in the courtroom. The Planning Commission work session will be July the 1st at 4:30 here in the court. The Planning Commission regular meeting will be July 12th at 4:30 here in the court. The Board of Zoning Adjustment will be held July 20th at 5:30 in the court. And the Board of Construction Appeals will be July 13th at 3:30 in the Bella Vista courtroom. On behalf of everyone in council, I wish you and your families a very happy and safe July the 4th holiday, and I hope you're able to come out and see the fireworks. The Chief Sims and, and his team will be firing off the top of Lock Loman on the night of the 3rd. Good night, and thank you.
One question, sir.
Yes, sir.
We have a parade, do we not, in the city?
Yes, we're having a, a parade down in the, in the Allen's area on, on July the 3rd. And Ellen, are you dancing again this year? Yeah, okay.
What, what time is, what time is the parade?
Uh, the parade will start at 9:30. There'll be tap dancing, and there'll be music, et cetera, from 9 until 9:30, and then the parade will actually start. It's usually a lot of fun, and it's, looks like it's going to be an okay day, too, which is great. Thank you again, and we are adjourned.